...that potentially could save a life. But officials say you'd be surprised by the number of residents who don't have an active smoke alarm.
Research shows that almost a quarter million people in the city of Los Angeles do not have working smoke alarms in their homes. And it's so important to get into those homes and find out what they need.
And that's why Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez and officials from the Los Angeles Fire Department and My Safe LA, an organization promoting fire and life safety, are emphasizing the importance of public safety.
We are going door-to-door and block-by-block to start connecting with our residents to make sure that they're aware of all of the services that we are here to provide and making sure that they are safe in the face of a number of the emergencies that we could be confronted with.
Since 2014, My Safe LA has installed more than 35,000 smoke alarms in homes all over the city of LA. That has led to a 40% reduction in residential fire fatalities.
Ten years leading up to 2014, on average, 21 people a year died at fires in Los Angeles. And during the last four years, we've seen that come down to 12. And that's a really terrific step. We'd like to see it down to eight a year and then down to zero at some point in time.
So the message here? Make sure your smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors are working.
We all know what happened in the Creek Fire. We know what happened in the Lutuna Fire. Those were tragic to our community, but I still believe the emergency preparedness that all these partners demonstrated facilitated greater public safety.
And it all begins in your home. I'm Rosha Goel for LA This Week.
Fighting: Fists of Fury join forces in support of traditional Chinese martial arts. Gil Reyes tells us why from LA's Chinatown.
You could say they're fighting to keep an ancient art form relevant.
Kung Fu masters, grandmasters of at least 40 different styles. And it's just an absolute miracle for all these fighters to be in the same room so peacefully.
They're actually fighting together to keep Kung Fu alive and kicking and punching in Southern California. This dinner in LA's Chinatown awards pioneers in the Chinese martial arts community and raises money to help keep their schools operating. That's the mission of the Traditional Chinese Martial Arts Federation of Los Angeles. The group formed last year.
In the spirit of friendship, the unity, and the respect, that's our mission statement.
With events like this is helping to hold us together. MMA became very popular. We need something to help our survival because what's happening right now, we're getting overcome by some of the sport arts, some of the wushu arts even out of China. And what we're trying to do is carry the ancient art.
Not just for self-defense, but for good, heart-pumping exercise, too. LA City Councilman David Rue says he's trained.
The entire city council and the mayor joins in your celebration, and we hope this event only gets larger and larger every single year.
Keeping the fighting spirit alive in LA's Chinatown. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
And that was the Federation's second annual fundraiser. More money is coming in to help fix our roads. Some middle school kids make school safety a priority. And a local park gets some much-needed upgrades thanks to the community. All this in City Beat.
Mayor Eric Garcetti gathered with transportation leaders at Union Station to highlight more than 1.2 billion in funds awarded to Southern California transportation projects. The funds will go towards repairing California's crumbling transportation infrastructure. Funding will support highway and road maintenance, increased public transit, and construction of local priority transportation projects.
I want to see my daughter. I want to see my wife. I don't want to be stuck in traffic. All of us have a place to be, and we're driving over potholed roads, crumbling bridges. We don't have enough transit options. SB 1 shows a way forward.
In collaboration with State Farm, the mayor's Vision Zero, and Los Angeles Unified School District, Los Angeles Rams' punter Johnny Hecker and Rams' cheerleaders surprised students at Columbus Middle School to announce the school as the winner of the "Street Safety Hero" pledge contest after its students submitted the highest share, 86%, of pledges to be "street safety heroes" as part of the Safe Routes to School program. Students take the pledge to be a safe pedestrian and remind family and friends who drive to be aware of people walking and biking on our streets. Councilman Jose Huizar and community members gathered to unveil $700,000 worth of improvements to San Pasqual Park. Communities suggested improvements include a new playground, outdoor fitness area, a basketball court, ADA walkways, and a refurbished parking lot. Phase two of the project will add new restrooms. Councilmember Huizar's office held five community meetings with the San Pasqual Neighborhood Watch to discuss park safety and instituted the improvements to make the space more active.
It only happened because the community is active, involved, and engaged.
The summer vacation season began with a patriotic salute to fallen service members. Gil Reyes has more from Memorial Day commemorations on the east side and in Canoga Park.
Within LA City, few communities have as much small-town flavor as Canoga Park. And it's here in Canoga Park where a wreath dedication for fallen service members takes place every Memorial Day.
It's a very patriotic part of Los Angeles, part of this country. And you'll see it. You'll see it in people lining the streets and cheering on, you know, all the floats that go by.
What follows is Canoga Park's Memorial Day parade. Service members, flag waivers, and local leaders make their way down Sherman Way for the biggest Memorial Day procession in California. Tens of thousands come to honor military men and women who died while serving.
Because a lot of them are forgotten. A lot of people were forgotten and still are forgotten.
Because they gave up their life to give us freedom. And I think that's an awesome thing.
It's also an opportunity to say thank you to those who are alive, who are veterans, who need our help, so many of which are living on the streets of Los Angeles. And we have an obligation, in the memory of all those who have fallen, to make sure that we take care of all of our vets.
Over on LA's east side, people honor the dead at El Sereno Memorial Monument. For decades, northeast LA has sent many of its young residents to war. Many of them did not make it home. For northeast councilman and first-generation American Jose Huizar, it's a time to honor those who died for freedoms many of us take for granted.
Not all people in the world can have freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom to congregate, and freedoms to march and protest against our own government. And the opportunities that we have in this country are tremendous.
Things to remember while enjoying summer vacation with friends and family. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Other commemorations took place at the LA National Cemetery in Westwood, the World War II Memorial in Boyle Heights, Forest Lawn Cemetery in Hollywood, and at the LA Coliseum. Well, join Councilmember Paul Krikorian for a hike and get a free tree, get inspired with a tour of some ranch-style homes from the '40s, and come out for a block party and go home with a new four-legged family member. All this in this week's Things to Do. Nature is calling. Join Councilmember Paul Krikorian, Assemblymember Nazarian, and Tree People for a Saturday morning hike in beautiful Coldwater Canyon Park. The first 50 people who show up will also get a free tree. It all takes place Saturday, June 9, at 9:00 a.m. at Coldwater Canyon Park located at 12601 Mulholland Drive in Beverly Hills. To RSVP, visit paulkrikorian.org/trepeoplehike. Author Chris LaCather will take attendees on a stroll in Valley Glen of a cluster of special ranch-style homes built by William Melanthan in the 1940s, '50s, and '60s. His singular brand of cozy, charming homes, which became known as the Melanthan Birdhouse Ranch Home, so-called because they featured a cupola or dove coat built prominently into the roof. As a special treat, one of the homeowners will open up their home for a tour. Light snacks and beverages will be offered. Water will be provided to all attendees. Make sure to wear walking shoes, sunscreen, and bring a hat in case it's hot. The tour takes place Saturday, June 9, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the corner of Addison and Ethel in Sherman Oaks. Whether you have two legs or four furry ones, this promises to be fun for all at the second annual Gloselle Bark Community Block Party and Pet Rescue Adoption, sponsored in part by CD1 Councilmember Gil Sadio. There'll be plenty of fun family festivities, including a watermelon eating contest, free professional family pet photos, free microchipping, free spay-neuter vouchers, low-cost vaccines, a doggy fashion show, human barking contests, live performances, and more. You could also enjoy live entertainment, local vendors, and food trucks. The block party takes place Saturday, June 9, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Gloselle Park located at 3750 Verdugo Road. For more, visit glosellebark.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hey, buddy. You with the stupid hat. Come here. Closer. No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the streets or emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally. And you know what else? You can get a citation. And you can be towed.
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Hey, look out for the pothole.
Birthdays, baby showers, graduations, or anniversaries, holidays like Cinco de Mayo, there are lots of fun excuses to throw a big party. But what do you do with all the stuff once the guests have gone home? Well, as long as they're clean and dry, you can recycle aluminum cans. Items like candy wrappers cannot be recycled. They need to go in your black bin. Party decorations? Well, consider reusing them. Pizza, doughnut boxes, and other pastry boxes can be recycled only if they're clean. If they are dirty and greasy, please throw them in your black bin. For more information, visit recicla.com.
This is Koreatown. My name is Huang Be Kim. You watch LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. I'll try that again. Good morning. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday. Appreciate you all being here, so welcome this morning as well. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonn, and Buscagino. Sadio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Huizar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in accord, Mr. President.
Great, and we welcome Joe Buscagino is here as well. We can add him to the board. Thank you very much, colleagues. Let's go ahead and jump right into the first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfeld moves. Mr. Bonn in seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wesson moves. Mr. Rue seconds. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 15 to June 19. And also, for the record, the applicant and the appellant agreed to extend the time limit for item number 15 to June 19, 2018, sir.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Item number one is an item notice for a public hearing. Mr. President, there are cards on this item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold it for cards. Thank you.
Items two through 12 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item nine has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration. And, Mr. President, there is a request to hold item number nine.
Okay, then that'll be the order. We'll go ahead and open up the remaining items, colleagues. Do we have any specials on those items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
They're approved. I also have a request from the mayor's office to move item four forthwith, so that'll be the order without objection. Okay, next items, please.
Mr. President, items 13 and 14 are items for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on 13 and 14. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are before us. Do we have cards? Cards on both. We'll go ahead and hold those for cards on both. Next items, please.
That brings council to presentations. Items called special or general public comments, sir.
We'll go ahead and let's go into presentations. Okay, we'll go ahead and go into presentations. And if I can ask Councilwoman Mary Martinez to please come up.
Good morning, Mr. Englander.
Good morning. Fantastic. Colleagues, this is a man that needs no introduction, but I will do so anyway. You know, many of us are dealing with one of the biggest, we're all dealing with, the biggest issue we face in our communities. We're dealing with the biggest moral dilemma of our lifetime. What we're dealing with are families, individuals who are chronically homeless, who are living on the streets, those who are newly homeless, homeless for so many different reasons. And we rely on our community partners more so than ever. We cannot, and we say this often, do this alone. But Wade Trimmer is the proof that we can't do it alone. He's the success behind achievement. In fact, many of the programs and the services and the housing models that we're looking to build, that we're looking to bring online, that we're trying to create, that the voters have passed, Wade's been doing. He hasn't been doing it alone, but he's been doing it. In fact, I call Wade Trimmer "The Phoenix" because it was out of the ashes that he really made a name for himself here in Los Angeles and was recognized. Because if you can imagine this, imagine you've lost everything. Imagine you are living in a shelter with your children and nothing more, Mr. Sadio, than the shoes on your feet, Mr. Blumenfeld, than the shirt on your back, Ms. Rodriguez, than the blanket that was lent to you to keep your children warm for one night. And then imagine, in the middle of the night, there's a fire, and the shelter, the last bit of hope, burns to the ground. Not only were you homeless, but you're now newly homeless again from a fire. In fact, many of these families ran out of the shelter with not even the shoes on their feet. I got a call from Wade in May of 2014 and his team. The next day, I found out, that morning, the wee hours, that they lost their shelter, that there was a fire. They needed shoes, toiletries, everything. They had nothing. I'll never forget the phone call, in fact, that I made to Walmart. And I called up in the morning and I said, "I need to speak with a manager." And they said, "There's no manager on duty. We just opened the store." I said, "Well, I need to speak with whoever's in charge." They said, "Okay, we have an assistant manager." And they got the assistant manager on the phone. And I said, "I'm Councilmember Mitchell Englander. We just had a fire in a homeless shelter burnt to the ground. We need shoes, clothing, toiletries. I need it all donated. I need it right now." And they said, "Okay, okay, slow down. Just have one quick question for you." I said, "Okay." She says to me on the phone, "What's a council member?" So I said, "All right, this is going to be a longer phone call." By the time we hung up, she said, "We're going to have three full baskets waiting for you. I'm putting my job on the line. Not only do I not know who you are or what you are, but what you're asking for sounds like the right thing to do." She put her job on the line. They sent over Stacy and so many other people to pick everything up, and everybody came to help. In fact, it was the only time that I remember, since I've been on the council, that on that Sunday, all the council members in the San Fernando Valley got on a conference call. We divided up tasks and responsibilities to figure out who needs to do what to get these people sheltered and how are we going to move forward. That's only one story of many. Wade came to me with the idea of crowdsourcing and funding a mobile shower. His concept was that we have to restore dignity and trust and opportunity and faith and build relationships with the people that are living on the street. And many of them are service-resistant. Many of them are aggressive and combative. Many have drug and alcohol and mental health issues. So what we need to do is go and meet them on a regular basis. And we have to offer them a hot meal, clean clothes, and a fresh shower. A shave, an opportunity, a friendship, a hug. And it's going to take that repeatedly, often, regularly, to build that relationship. And he wanted to crowdsourc this, so we did that. We partnered. And today, we have two mobile showers that go all over the city, start off in the San Fernando Valley, even Santa Clarita borrows it because of Wade. Those two, by the way, actually are four stalls and offer 105 showers a day. Today, I'm honoring Wade because he's actually... Today, I'm honoring Wade because he's actually moving on to another mission and leaving the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission. In fact, I remember when Marquise Harris-Dawson just got elected to the city council, and we started talking about this very issue from day one. By the way, the best seatmate anybody could ask for. We often and regularly, almost daily, talk about what we're doing to try to help a little bit. So I was talking to him about the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission. And the first question he asked me was, "Where's the San Fernando Valley?" No, he didn't say that. "When can I come out and visit this place that you're talking about? There's no place like this on the planet that could be possible with everything you're describing. It doesn't exist. I'm going to come out and see it." So he did. He came out there, we toured it, and then, much to my surprise, I found him sneaking back and giving tours with other people because we know it could be replicated and duplicated in all of our districts. Wade has made a mark that is unprecedented. He's dedicated his life to helping those in need, those that need service. Prior to the mission, he served as an associate director for My Friend's Place, a drop-in center for homeless youth. He co-founded and was the executive director of the Santa Clarita Valley Youth Project and the executive director of the mentoring project, the nationwide effort to mentor and assist fatherless young men. All in all, he's dedicated over 26 years of his life to helping those most vulnerable in our society. His time as the director of the rescue mission has been incredible. While communities are often resistant to shelters, the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission is a model because of Wade, because of his staff, because of April, because of so many volunteers and others who have stepped up. But it's all been Wade. His leadership, we've tripled the rescue mission's service capacity and proved that we can manage shelters and contribute to help our communities. I can go on and on about the unique partnerships we created. In fact, one of the first Clean Streets, Clean Starts Program, where we partnered with Wade, where we can hire the folks who are living on the street to clean up the streets, give them an opportunity, offer shelter, offer substance abuse programs. We've now spin that off. It's become its own nonprofit with its own Board of Directors and Governing Board. They've taken over the entire San Fernando Valley. I think they're working in five or six of the council districts now. Neighborhood councils are funding them, and they're helping thousands of people. It's Wade, helping to get that off the ground and keep it moving. We just finished our Making Movies That Matter, the largest youth film festival now in California. And Wade came to us and said, "You know, this is great. You're reaching out to Title I schools, many kids that would never have the opportunity to learn the creative side of filmmaking, to look for and towards a career in what they can be doing in their own communities, making a great income and giving back to society. It would be great if the kids that were living in the shelter, imagine this, children living in a homeless shelter, creating a film on Making Movies That Matter and submitting it for a film festival and winning. They did that." Wade, looking out for partnerships, thinking outside the box. Wade actually, this is really cool. He had a friend, a lifelong friend, who he knew that made it, successfully made it in society, and became very independent, very wealthy. So Wade had an idea that if he went to him and said, "Will you sponsor every single family that moves out of the shelter and gets their own apartment?" This is amazing. Every family that moves out of the shelter and gets their own apartment, they move into an empty apartment. They don't have a bed, they don't have furniture, the refrigerator's empty, the cupboards are empty, they don't have towels, toiletries. What if you furnished and supplied every single family with a home kit of all of those essential, basic needs? Fill the cabinet with food, stock the cabinets with toiletries and linens, beds for the kids and the families, everything they need. He agreed, and every family now that's moved out of the shelter, Wade has gotten and worked with him to fund and get them started. It's Wade. This guy has really made a mark on L.A. He's truly a hero. He's moving on to bigger and better things. I don't know if they're better. I don't know that you can do bigger. But what you've done is you've set a bar. You've set a bar in Los Angeles that I don't know of a single person that's been able to do what you've done to inspire so many, to help so many, to ask for nothing in return, to never want recognition, to go out there unconditionally and help as many people as you possibly can, get on their feet, get off the street, and have a life. And he's become a dear friend, even to the point where we've ridden our motorcycles together. Every time I see him, it's always about what can we do to get more people help. And I am so grateful to Wade. So, colleagues, let's give it up for Wade Trimmer, giving him so much to so many for so long, and wishing you the best in the future. As a token of appreciation...
Mr. Englander, we also have some members on the queue.
I was going to guess that. I wanted to say that we don't often all sign every certificate, and this is special. This is actually signed by each one of us. As just a token of appreciation, as a send-off to say, "We love you, God bless you, and we wish you the best." So I know we want to open it up for other members, but I wanted to give him this first.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Madam President. Mitch, thank you for bringing Wade here, and, you know, you certainly said it all, but I want to say that everything that Mitch said is true. I mean, Wade is amazing, and I have appreciated all that you do and your friendship over these years. The work that you do with the mission is incredible. You've helped my office with coordinating volunteers. You came out for a difficult homeless town hall meeting to help really talk with the community and try to educate people about the various issues. And you've just, you've been there, you're one of these people who really, you know, you put your money where your mouth is. I mean, you're there on the front lines, and you've had really innovative approaches to things, and you have made our community better, and you have touched so many lives. I just wanted to say a few words to say thank you for that, and Mitch, thank you for honoring Wade.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Englander, for bringing this presentation this morning. Wade, I just want to personally thank you because in the early days of being on the council, and, you know, Councilman Englander described it correctly, and I was asked to take leadership of the Homelessness and Poverty Committee, and I had a lot of anxiety about that because I felt like homelessness is a really big problem. There weren't really very many solutions, and it just seemed like a big mess, and I was asked, being asked to step into the middle of it. And when I visited your shelter, it was one of the times when I felt like, okay, this is something that can be fixed. This is a social problem that can be solved. Not only did we walk through the shelter, and the shelter is extremely impressive for families, the big thought that I had walking through that was like, if my parents had been homeless with us when we were kids, this is a place that they would have wanted or that they would have sought out, and so that's a very high standard for me. But what was as impressive as the shelter was the conversation that we had in the lobby where you and your team went through the names of every homeless person in the vicinity that wasn't staying in the shelter because they were service resistant for one reason or another, mental health or substance abuse or whatever. And you had a plan for how to win them over, to get them off the street and into the shelter. And I thought that that was as important as having the facility because so often, many of us want to, you know, throw, I mean, I have conversations with people, and I just say, "What are we going to do? This is hopeless." And you all had sat down, made the commitment, and in a disciplined way begun to figure it out. And so I want to personally thank you for that because that's a big thing. And then, almost as big, our first Homeless Connect Day, you drove that shower down to South L.A., and dozens and dozens of people took showers that day, and I run into people to this day that haven't forgotten that shower that they got on Avalon and 98th Street from some people who came to them from the San Fernando Valley. So thank you so much.
And Wade, I just want to add, what an amazing human being you are. I still remember the night that the building on Sataque caught on fire. And Mr. Englander's right, how everybody came together, not only because we thought it was important, but because we knew the need was necessary and that we needed to find resources to help those families. I also want to just, kudos to your entire staff. I think they are amazing people doing amazing work, and you had an amazing leader, and I know that it's in good hands, but I wish you the best, Wade. You are truly one of the most special people I have ever worked with. Good luck, and I'm going to miss you.
Before I ask Wade to say a few words, Wade had an idea some time ago that one of the biggest issues we face with actually building one of these facilities, which we're all struggling with every day, is that nobody wants this in their neighborhood. And so we partnered on a program where, on a regular basis, we bring, we've hosted every single neighborhood council now in my district at the mission. We've brought in all the chambers of commerce to the mission, CSUN to the mission. We constantly go out there with service clubs, kewanas, rotaries, schools, trying to get as many people in there, and so we host meetings there and give them tours and let them meet some of the families so they understand what could, this could very well be right next door to them, and they would love it. Wade set out with that vision when they started on this building, where he tapped HGTV, who was it?
Emily Henderson.
Emily Henderson. And in fact, she was pregnant at the time. And she came in and decorated, and you can imagine, you've seen those HGTV Extreme Makeovers? They did this, she did this for the mission. So you walk in and you think you're in some beautiful resort, and we were able to accomplish that. And so now, when we bring people there, every person that walks in, I ask them, when we host these meetings, when we had 50 neighborhood councils there, I said by a show of hands, "Who would allow these? Who would vote on one of these if it was on their agenda in the neighborhood council to put this in their community? And I want to see every hand up, and I'm going to hold you accountable to that." And I always do that, and I drill them for it. And it was Wade that said, "Let's change the mindset. Let's get them to see what these could be and what they're about." And everything that, Nuri, that you said, she's a remarkable human being that's led a truly, and I'll use your word, amazing staff that all do it for the right reasons, and it's because of Wade's leadership, and we're certainly going to miss him at the mission. So, without further ado, Wade Trimmer.
Thank you so much for your very kind and generous remarks this morning. It's a little bit uncomfortable for me and very humbling, but it's really also a testament to you, to this great city, and to its leaders. It's certainly a testament to my team. The most difficult decision I've made in my career was leaving the mission, and I wouldn't leave unless I knew two things. One, that it was in great hands, or three things. Two, that it was stronger than when I found it. And lastly, that wherever I was going, I'd be able to make a bigger impact, and that's the case. I now act as the executive director of Housing and Homeless Services with the National Health Foundation, and you'll learn more about that as we go on. I want to thank each of you for, not only your partnerships, but your friendship. Thank you for your encouragement. This work is not for the faint of heart, nor is your work. Thank you for your tireless efforts to lead our city. And each of you, I think I've shared sentiments with more personally. And as much as I'm grateful for the recognition of my work, I want to thank you for the recognition of the crisis facing our most vulnerable citizens, people experiencing homelessness. Just this morning, I was made aware of a woman who passed away earlier this week, and I shared Thanksgiving dinner with her at our Thanksgiving feast last year. Last week ended with the news that another person I knew experiencing homelessness passed away on Friday. This devastating news only strengthens my resolve and tenacity to do all I can to help as many people as I can. But of course, we have to do it together, and the truth is, is that people are dying, human beings are suffering, and it's our job to alleviate that suffering. I'm confident that we'll see a day where our most vulnerable citizens are housed. We'll see a day where seeing a person who is homeless is an anomaly. It's no longer normal, and I won't give up until I see that day. And I'm asking you to not give up until you see that day. I want to again thank my team. April Lind is acting as the interim director of the rescue mission. I ask that you give her your, as much support, if not more, than you gave me, and your encouragement. Melissa Champion is here today, who has been such a backbone of our organization, and so many others who have been part of our team. And then Kelly Bruno is here today, who's the CEO of the National Health Foundation, has been doing incredible work for over a decade. So with that, can't thank you enough. Mitch, I want to thank you for a framed, you said, this is framed, it's beautiful, I'm going to go hang it on my wall now. And again, thank you for all you do for our great city.
Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to item number nine. I believe there's an amending motion that's been circulated. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. The amending motion was submitted, posted, circulated, and now is before council.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, and that item's been requested to move forward forthwith on item number nine. Mr. Price, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Members, today I have not one but two presentations for you, and I promise they're equally important. June, some of you already know, is African-American Music Appreciation Month. Today, I'm expanding it to include the gamut of African-American storytelling, music, and culture. Some of you may have read the Pulitzer Prize-winning story by Alice Walker, "The Color Purple." Others of you have seen the 1986 iconic film starring Whoopi Goldberg, Oprah Winfrey, directed by Steven Spielberg with music by Quincy Jones. "The Color Purple" is an American story for the whole world. It's about life, it's about love, it's about us. You'll always remember Mister, or Shug, or Old Mister, Nettie, Harpo, Squeak, Sofia, and Seeley. And you'll never forget "The Color Purple." But many of you haven't had a chance to see "The Color Purple" like this. Let's roll the tape. (Music) 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 Members, please join me in welcoming the stars of the live action musical "The Color Purple," now playing at the Hollywood Pantages in Mr. O'Farrell's district through June 17. Please welcome, let's give them a round, Mr. Gavin Gregory, who plays Mister, Ms. Carrie Comprit, who plays Sofia, and Ms. Carla Stewart, who plays Shug. (Laughter) Gavin, would you mind saying two words?
Hi, everyone. Thank you all so much for having us here today. First of all, we just want to give honor to someone who started this, and that was Ms. Alice Walker, who really wrote and inspired so many people, inspired Steven Spielberg and Quincy Jones to even embark upon making an awesome movie that's become iconic. And now, here we are, being able to represent this story of redemption, of hope, of love, that's going to resonate, I mean, it's resonating now, it resonated then, and I'm sure it's going to resonate 100 years from now. And we're just so proud to be a part of it. Black music, African-American music has been a cornerstone of American culture, and we just want to thank you for representing this. We would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the songwriters of such great music. Mr. Stephen Bray, who's done so many wonderful works, I mean, he's worked with artists like Madonna, he does all sorts of movie scoring and whatnot. Ms. Brenda Russell, who's also another amazing singer and songwriter, and also Ali Willis, who has just been inducted into the Songwriters Hall of Fame. So, on behalf of them and all of the wonderful people that we work with on a daily basis, carrying this beautiful story of redemption throughout the country, we really, really thank you so much for recognizing us. Thank you.
And please accept this as a token of our appreciation for the brilliant work that you've done and for the revival that's in place now.
Thank you so much. (Laughter) (Laughter) (Laughter)
Let's give a hand again, please. Now, members, for my living legends, not one, but two Centarians. I think this is going to be an historic moment in the history of the Los Angeles City Council Chambers. Let's give a warm round of applause for Mrs. Lily Thomas (Applause). Come on, Lily. And Mr. Shep Shepherd. Mrs. Thomas is the matriarch of the Dolo Koker Jazz Scholarship Board, and she will be celebrating her 103rd birthday on September the 3rd, 2018. She's a native of Elizabeth, Louisiana, and has been an active member of the historic Second Baptist Church of Los Angeles in the 9th District. She's been the treasurer of the Charles Dolo Koker Jazz Scholarship Foundation for 35 years. She sang in the cathedral choir for 25 years. She is a Paris, France-trained milliner. She served as a local and national officer of the National Association of Accessory Designers, and has many more accolades. Mrs. Thomas, would you care to say a word?
The one thing I can say, I'm blessed, and I'm very thankful to be here and still be a part of the Dolo Koker Foundation.
All right, thank you. Now, I'd like to introduce drummer, Mr. Bressford Shep Shepherd. Shep has performed with some of the best musicians in the world, and he says it's all about love. He's played with Benny Carter, Artie Shaw, Dizzy Gillespie, Lena Horne, Cap Colway, Ella Fitzgerald, and that's only a fraction of the list. His love for music and for life. In New York City, in the 40s, you heard "Get Shep," and that was synonymous with getting the best. At 101 years old, 101, he's a composer, an arranger, a drummer, trombonist, and sometimes a vocalist. He made his way to California in 1964 on the road with the stage production "Here's Love" in San Francisco. Shep eventually moved to Southern California, and we are blessed with his presence today. And I understand he maintains an active record and is going to be performing?
Yes, July 13th at Saddleback College and July 18th at Newport Beach.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, Shep.
Yeah, one more time. It's a pleasure, believe me, much beyond words, and to be standing here with my lovely wife and a fabulous great-grandson, who flew up here from Texas just to be here with his grandpa.
All right.
(Laughter). It's a pleasure indeed. Now, listen, I could go on talking and carrying on, but out of my repertoire,
All right.
(Laughter).
What is it?
Out of my repertoire, one of the tunes that says most about how I feel regarding all of this, and the question that's so often answered or asked, is "How you do it, man?" Make someone happy. Make just one someone happy. Make that someone the one you sing to.
All right.
One smile that pleases you, one face that lights when it sees you, one soul you everything to. Now, fame, if you win it, comes and goes in a minute. Where's that good stuff in life we all cling to? Love is the answer. Someone to love is the answer. When you find it, build your world around it. Make someone happy, just one someone happy, and you will be happy too.
All right.
(Laughter). That's about the size of it, believe me when I tell you.
101 years young. Let's give it up again for Mrs. Thomas and Mr. Shepherd. And let's also give a word of thanks to Linda Morgan from the Living Legend Foundation for all of her work in making sure that we respect and remember our greats.
Mr. Price, what a great presentation. Our Living Legends, let's give them another big round of applause. Phenomenal. Mr. Buscagno, if you were old enough and can carry a tune, I would ask you to accompany That was great.
(Inaudible). 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 Mr. President and colleagues, we are ready to begin our next presentation. I am so pleased to be standing here with our colleague Jose Uizar of the 14th District, with Ms. Rea Orita, representing the Philippines Consul, Rea Lazo, President of La Face, which is the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, and is Commissioner Joel Jacinto here? I haven't seen him. Okay, maybe he'll pop in during this. But I want to say to everyone, mabuhay.
Mabuhay.
Colleagues, on June 12th of 2018, the Philippine nation will commemorate the 120th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence from Spain, which led to the establishment of the first constitutional republic in all of Asia. I am particularly proud to be here today as a representative of historic Filipino town, a neighborhood that has been home to Filipinos since the 1940s, and served as a gateway for many Filipino immigrants in Los Angeles. Something that's very exciting, and I'm going to hold up this sign. Isn't that nice? The Pasig River is a sister river now, and it was commemorated. The Pasig River, which is in Manila, the Philippines, is the most recent sister river, that's not easy to say, sister river, to the Los Angeles River. In October of last year, 2016, a Philippine delegation visited Los Angeles for tours, meetings, the signing of the Sister River Agreement with Commissioner Joel Jacinto. And I want to thank Joel, even though he's not able to be here right now, for working on this very important initiative. Pasig-Sister River sign will be on display at our LA River Day exhibit on the Bridge of City Hall. Therefore, it is an honor to join you, all of you, in commemorating the 120th anniversary of the Philippines' independence. Oh, and there's Joel right now. Joel, big round of applause. Yay, Joel. (Applause). Joel, I don't know if you heard, but I was just bragging about your work on the Sister River. So, meraming salamat to all, and now I'd like to present our colleague, Jose Uizar.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Mitch. Let's give Mitch, Councilmember O'Farrell, a big round of applause. Thank you for your continued support of our Filipino-American community here in Los Angeles. And it's great that we recognize Philippine Independence Day, and, you know, here in the city of Los Angeles, we often talk about how we are a city of immigrants, and indeed that is true, and we are very proud to host and be part of a family, an international family, where many countries throughout the world say, "Hey, you know what? Our largest population of our own is in Los Angeles." And that's true for the Philippines as well, but what's different is that the Philippines were one of the first founders of the city of Los Angeles. They were here with the pobladores when we first, the European nations, discovered Los Angeles and made it a city in those colonial times. They were part of the original pobladores. So, we talk often about Filipinos in Los Angeles as immigrants, but in fact, they have been here since the very beginning. So, thank you for that. And we also want to acknowledge Council General Rea Orita, members of the Filipino Association of City Employees, their president, Rea Lazo, and everyone else who joined us. I am very proud to be part of this celebration each and every year, not only because I have met many great members of the Filipino community here in Los Angeles, but also that I happen to represent one of the largest Filipino communities in Los Angeles, which is in northeast Los Angeles. We have people like Ruby De Vera and others who are very active in our community, who contribute each and every day to make Los Angeles better. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we say thank you to the Filipino community. We say congratulations for Philippine Independence Day, and let's move forward as one of the most diverse cities in the world to show them how we could all continue to work together and celebrate this Independence Day here in Los Angeles. Congratulations.
And now, I would like to actually bring up Ms. Rea Orita, Office of the Philippine Consul General in Los Angeles.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Philippine Consulate General in Los Angeles and Consul General Adel Cruz, I would like to thank the city council for this moment and for this recognition. When we look back in history and we see the patterns of Filipino migration, we could see that Filipino migration is caused mainly, primarily by the need to earn a better living and build a better future for our families. And perhaps, receiving a recognition like this is the least of the expectations of the early Filipino settlers in the city. But here we are in the 21st century, amidst the majestic walls of this chamber, being recognized in the city. We've come a long way, and it is really a moment of deep pride and honor for us to be here today. And on behalf of the more than 120,000 Filipino-Americans in the city, I'm glad to stand here before you today and to recognize their contributions, not just to the economy of the city, but also in shaping the socio-cultural fabric of Los Angeles. And at that, shout out to Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and LA City Mayor Eric Garcetti for their continuing work in the Filipino historic town. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. A few acknowledgements before we bring Rea Lazo of La Face up to say a few words. I'd like to acknowledge Yekor Anel of FASG, which is the Filipino-American Service Group, Inc. I'd like to acknowledge Fernandinco Q. Gonong of FAKLA, Philippine-American Community of Los Angeles. We might have some law enforcement personnel who are here of Filipino heritage. Darna Umayam, Philippine Independence Coordinating Counsel of Southern California. Mildra Diang, Miss Filipina International, and the Miss Filipina Participants. And they have been outsized sort of success in the Miss Universe pageant. What is it about Filipino women, but they really represent? All right, now I'd like to, and also we have, who just joined us, Mr. Mike Ng, who is a former college board of trustees, LACC, and former assembly member, who you'll hear from in a moment. But next, I'd like to bring on Rea Lazo of La Face. Rea?
Good morning, honorable council president and council members and all present here today. I am honored to stand before you as the president of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, as we celebrate the 120th year of the Philippine Independence. As a Philippine organization, La Face's mission is not only to assist Filipinos and other city employees with career advancement and employment in civil service, but to assist in economic, educational, and cultural advancement of Filipinos in the Los Angeles community. In celebrating and commemorating milestones such as Philippine Independence Day, we hope to share Filipino history, culture, traditions, and most especially our food, with younger Filipino-Americans and the diverse groups of people that comprise this great city of Los Angeles. Through exposure and social connections, we hope that greater knowledge and appreciation of each other's culture will help build a stronger sense of community. When we meet, talk, get to know each other, share meals together, we're bound to learn of similar experiences and common bonds, even when our viewpoints differ. By appreciating and leveraging our uniqueness in creative ways, we can work together to improve our community. Again, on behalf of La Face and its 2,700 members, we thank all council members and specially acknowledge Councilmember O'Farrell and Councilmember Uizar for your continued support of La Face, the civil servants of the city of Los Angeles, and the Filipino community. Mabuhay.
Mabuhay. Thank you so much. Before I bring on Mike Ng, I would like to acknowledge members of my staff, Gigi Galias, who is here, who of my staff, Gigi Galias, who is here, who keeps me organized here at the City Hall Office, and Angelo Yanko, who is Legislative Lead on so many things that we're working on. Thank you, Angelo. Yes, you. All right, now I'd like to bring on someone who has been an advocate and ally to the Filipino community for so many years, most recently of the LACC College Board of Trustees, and previous to that, Assembly Member, and that is the Honorable Mike Ing.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, Chair Mitch Englander, thank you for having me. I love your last name. I wish mine was a little bit longer than yours, but I got the E-N-G right. And Councilmember O'Farrell, thank you. You've always been at the forefront of recognizing emerging and empowering communities, and with my good friend, Uizar as well. I'm gonna make this very brief. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the person that encouraged me to run for office for the very first time, and that was in the city of Monterey Park, Gee Monte Manibog, may his soul rest in peace, was the first Filipino-American ever elected in the United States of America. And he was also an Olympian and an attorney, and encouraged me to run. In fact, he named the street that I live on, that my wife Judy Chu and I live on today, it's called Bataan Place. And many people asked him, why would you name your street? That's some associated with the death march in the Philippines. He said, because I want people to know, I want the world to know, that we need to honor the historic long march of many people who died along the way who didn't make it. And just as the Filipino-American community stands for you today, many did not live long enough to see the recognition that this chamber has given today. I also want to acknowledge my former colleagues, Mr. Sadio, Mr. Bloomfield, and Mr. Price, and Mr. Kurets, and Mr. Kukorian, who served with me before. And thank you for empowering emerging communities as well. So, thank you so much. This resolution means so much to not just the Filipino-American community, but every community who wanted to say, to be here today and continue to receive the recognition that all of you have given us. Thank you so much. Mabuhay. Salamat. Salamat.
Thank you, Mr. Ing. So, again, we're so thrilled and honored to acknowledge this community in the 120th anniversary of Philippine Independence Day, independence from tyranny, independence from injustice. And those struggles continue, and we must always stay united in this current resistance in this country to the similar impulses that we're experiencing. Because there's room for everyone, no matter who you are or where you're from, for all of our youth and all of their parents who are getting separated at the border, it's very, very important that we stand with one voice for all families, and Los Angeles can do that like no other city. So, it's in that spirit that we congratulate you on the 120th anniversary of Philippine Independence Day.
We do have one council member on the queue as well. And Mr. Sadio, and Mr. O'Farrell. I want to get a picture of the two of you, because the tie and the dress match perfectly right there. I just want to point that out. Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
I want to give him a second.
Oh, give him a time to take a picture. You got it. You got it. Mr. Ing, so you know, while you're taking the picture, with Englander, they always ask me the spelling. How do you spell Englander? Is it with an I or an E? So, I always tell them it's England with an ER. They still ask, is it an I or an E? Mr. Sadio.
Yes. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this to our attention. Obviously, a very significant event in the Western Hemisphere. As a senator and as Assembly Member, I had the privilege of sharing that same area, representing that area. As a... The ties of our communities are rich and deep, and I wanted to acknowledge that. I wanted to acknowledge the staff that served my office and served our community over the years, and it's been a quite robust staff. Right now, I have four Filipinos working for me in my office. Some people refer to it as a Filipinos Working Center. So, let me acknowledge Jamal Iloman, who's been with me since the first day I was elected. Tony Ricassa, who's also a return to my office after many years of working for me. Gerald Gubatan. And he's out ill today, but Eduardo Hewitt is also part of our staff, and we're very pleased to have him with us. I want to acknowledge a few others who have worked for me, Marissa Abrahano, who's now a professor at the University of San Diego, Lindsay Hervacio, and also our intern Natalie Ricassa Bagapuro. And then, finally, note that with this rich staff, our office was the first office in the nation to honor the Filipino World War II veterans, and to make sure that they and their families were compensated for their commitment and their patriotism to our nation. And so, I wanted to take a moment to do that. And finally, also welcome to this chamber's a great leader, not just for the Filipinos or for the Asian-American community, but a great leader in our state for all people, for civil rights and human rights, Miguel Mike Ing. So, thank you for being with us. Miguelito Ing. So, thank you.
And, Mr. President, I would be remiss if I didn't introduce my Deputy Planning Director, Kevin Ukubio, with a cool haircut. Thank you, Kevin, for all the work you do.
Mr. Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell and Councilmember Uizar, for bringing this. And thank you, Councilmember Sadio. I remember your office from way back with Mel and Tony and the first elected official I ever met, when you represented not just Filipino, historic Filipino town, but Koreatown and Chinatown and all the Asian-American neighborhoods. You were the first elected official I ever met. You were the first office I ever worked in. And to the Filipino-American community, Happy Independence Day. The Filipino community has been, is the most populous of the Asian-American communities in Los Angeles, and it has been a pillar in our community. And it set the stage and set the way for many of the future Asian-American immigrants who did come into this area. So, I really thank you for your friendship. I really thank you for all your support, whether it's the veterans or whether it's doing festivals. And I know I had the fortunate opportunity to go to Councilman Uizar's district last year, when the Filipino Heritage Ceremony was temporarily moved for one year from CD 13 to CD 14. But what I told the Filipino people is, it's not just about historic Filipino town. It is wherever Filipino-Americans gather, it's Filipino town. So, thank you for being part of the rich, diverse city of Los Angeles, and Happy Independence Day.
All right. With that, that closes the presentation. And again, we're just so honored to be able to bring all of you together today and celebrate the 120th anniversary of this very, very historic day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think forever, until the end of the day at least, I'll be known as Ing, so I'll go with that. We have, what do we have left on the presentations? I believe that concludes the presentations. We'll start going into public comment in a moment. Okay, let's go ahead and go into multiple speaker items. So, we'll start with items 1, 13, and 14. Mr. Herman?
for confirmation of lien nuisance, we all recognize who current price is in CD 9 at 216 East 64th Street. He's gonna waive the lien to prevent punitive damages harm for unconstitutional liens against this property, item 170160S for soccer 728. And then, current price again at 715 East Manchester Avenue, I'm pretty sure Mr. Price will waive the lien here as well. Now, in regards to Mr. Dawson, he really has no sympathy for his consul district. As you see, he has a 3,500.24 lien against South Harvard Boulevard. Let me give you the address, 9206 South Harvard Boulevard. In addition to that, in all protests against liens, I demand that you waive all liens as of today. I am here to favor the plaintiffs in which you caused bodily injury and mental health due to the sacrifice of what you've done. As you see, I too have just came back from the doctor. Then, I go into the next item, which I signed up in the very back. By the way, why aren't we not answering to item number nine? Anyways, let's look at item number 13 in CD 2115953, bar license number of Paul Martin Kukorian, dealing with amending action to correct the address of the day laborer's site, such as myself. I'm unemployed, but I'm here working. How can that be? Because I'm here working. So, the Department of General Services has negotiated under LLC that homeless service in the future, and that of the least, include a provision that does not allow to lease or sublease any property to the homeless. As you see, we're having problems with housing. But yet, during the presentation, if you go back and roll the tape, there was so much gratitude and talk about helping homeless people. Then, finally, on maps, dealing with Woo, Woo, and his participation and participation. We have to understand that city engineer reports don't outline the details. They use discriminatory bias prejudice against people of color, because Koreans hate Americans. As for my general public comment, as you all well know, that I, Armando Herman, for the record, was dismissed under 22 seconds for public comment, maybe because the chair was not willing to let me say, "Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for cleaning up the valley." They thought I was going to say something different. That's censorship. That's discrimination. So, as long as you're in America and you vote for Mr. John Cox, I would rather vote for a Republican, Mr. John Cox, because my cocksucking governor is gonna do better for California. Vote for Cox. Support Cox. C-O-X. Not like the city of Los Angeles, C-O-C-K, cocksuckers. And let's win, win, win. Remove the LGBT queer from San Francisco. And as I said, under 42SC, fuck Mitchell Englander.
Thank you, Armando. All right, Eric Previn. Eric, come on up. You are on 1, 13, and 14.
Thank you, sir. 1, 13, 14, and 9, because you have a 9A, which was a substantial change, correct?
Mr. President, that item has already been voted on.
Right, so could you reconsider?
Can you stay on the items, please? Or you're gonna forfeit your time. I'm not gonna tell you the rules again. You're here every single day. We tell you the rules all the time. You're always off subject.
Item number one is the lien item, and we don't have any from 12, but we do have some from District 6, which is Martinez, 8, which is Harris Dawson, who has a 35. He broke the record today for the highest lien against his constituents. But I want to just give a little acknowledgement to Mr. Price and also to Mr. Uizar, who are experiencing some very big and robust development down in their areas. They also have liens on their property, trying to clean up the neighborhood. But what they were tabulating, we're not 100% sure. We're also looking for who has the largest tax breaks to hoteliers in the district. And we feel that it's probably Uizar, but Mr. Price has made some adequate moves in that category. And we're looking forward to an accurate tabulation of who is gonna win that contest, which we're bringing forward very, very soon. And speaking of transit occupancy tax waivers, I just want to give a shout out to the group that's working without an agendized item, but looking forward to, at some point, slapping on the table some kind of a settlement for REWLL.
You're not on the subject matter.
No, no, sir. It's about the liens. Are we not doing liens today?
No, you're not talking, you're talking about something completely different than the specific liens.
All right, sir. I'm on the waving of the liens, buddy. I don't want to argue with you right now. Are you gonna let me speak on item number two?
I'm just correcting, so you know the rules.
I appreciate that.
Clearly forget. You gotta speak specifically to what's on the agenda.
All right. Well, then, let's talk about the Neighborhood Council elections, because I think that's certainly fair game. What we're doing is, we are moving it over to the clerk, and we're gonna skip a year to year three for the terms.
Mr. President, he's not on agenda.
Okay, his time is up. He's disrupting this meeting.
No, it's item number two.
No, you're disrupting the meeting. So...
Not disrupting the meeting.
Yeah, you're disrupting the meeting. So, please have a seat.
It's general public comment.
It's disrupting. Oh, can you please escort Mr. Herman out of the room? Armando, you're out. Armando, you're out. Sergeants, please escort him out. Mr. Previn, have a seat. Have a seat. You're disrupting this meeting, or you can leave too. If you're not gonna follow the agenda items, and you're constantly reminded it's a disruption, and you know the rules. So, Mr. Previn, if you're not gonna have a seat, you're disrupting the meeting.
I would like to make a general public comment.
All right, start your general public comment right now. Start your general public comment.
I can't. You have to wait. Sorry, I can't speak when he's...
I can hear you fine. Go ahead.
Oh, you can hear me fine? Nice, nice. Keep... You're eating my time. Okay. Inappropriate conduct. Okay. The, what I was just speaking about is that there is a plan underfoot to waive a bunch of assessments on a hotelier, Sportsman's Lodge, REWLLC, but we don't have any information. So, I was discussing that with the city attorney's office, who decided not to shut, he's got his stand-in today. But Mr. Faubel needs to make clear what the terms of the... If he owes 5 million, and we're gonna waive it down to 1 million, or if he owes 1 million, we're gonna waive it down to... People need to know, because we're not waiving so much for the small players, but the big players who are contributing, sir, including to you and your supervisor, Cam, including to, I can go around the room. A lot of the people in this room received contributions from this chap and his LLC, and the various iterations of that.
All right, your time is up. Thank you very much. The next speaker, please. Sean?
Hey, Sean, how are you? Good morning. Good. What items?
You're on items 1, 13, and then general public comment. 1 and 13.
Yeah. Item 13 is roadmaps. Item...
Middle-class America? What about them? At least Donald Trump is taking care of them. He's fighting for them. You don't give a shit, as long as you get your money. Hara, magida, hara, magida, hara.
Okay, your time is up.
You get your money, man.
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
God bless Donald Trump, and God bless America. And the military.
Mr. President, item nineteen, the amendment for...
Yeah, that was a little extra. Yeah, I agree. Okay, I'm sorry.
Item nineteen, there is an amendment on item nineteen. The amendment has been posted, circulated, and is now before council, sir.
Great, thank you very much.
But at this moment...
Get rid of all the blacks in South LA and move in Jews, okay? And Asians. And remember, the future is not Jewish, the future is yellow.
Okay, you're not on your subject at all. So start us one minute for general public comment.
One minute for general public comment. I'm telling you right now that Antonio Villarigosa, we said we would beat his ass. We beat his ass. And finally, the first story in the LA Times, which actually tells you the truth about Antonio yesterday. And Herb Wesson was his chairman. That's why you don't see his black ass around here now. Of course, he sold it to a Mexican who fucked him in the ass.
All right. You know what?
Mayor, no, there's nothing wrong with saying that.
Stick to items under the subject matter and the purview of this.
Can I say fuck somebody in the ass? Can I say that?
If you're not speaking to items under the purview of this committee, you're done.
No, no, no. I'm on public comment. General public comment.
Doesn't matter. It's not about anything general public.
You piece of fucking shit.
Okay, you're done. Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Have a seat. Thank you once again for being so articulate.
Wayne?
Same items, Wayne.
Yeah, fuck them in the ass. So we get to these things. We have a lien, number one. It's disgusting. From one E. N-n-n-n-n-n-n-n-nary. N-n-n-n-n-n-n-n-nary. Making liens on North Kester Avenue. We talked about this the other day. $1,655 fucking dollars. Now, see? I wore my denim patch and she wears her denim patch, terrorizing this poor fucking homeowner, putting this woman out in the street, North Kester Avenue. Rape is a fucking lien. We don't want the lien. Get rid of that lien bitch. We do not want these fucking liens anymore. We are tired. We also asked Mr. Price to waive his two liens. And what did he say? He told us to talk to somebody named Lynn Price. And I went there and I cannot find her in the office. But we will go to the New Jersey office and find her there. Waive the fucking liens now. Negato numbers. This fucking agenda. Thirteen. To expand the labor shortage facility in CD2. Bah! Yes, even though I'm a pig, that filthy fucking Krakorian is doing it again in North Hollywood. He's pushing his slaves from Studio City to fucking North Korea. North Korea, North Hollywood, the same goddamn fucking thing. You go over to North Hollywood, it's a goddamn filthy shithole over there. Donald Trump called North Hollywood the new North Korea, the new shithole of the United States. And Mr. Fucking Krakorian, that son of a bitch, lets this happen every day. Why do I have to go to a day labor site?
Mr. Walsh, have a seat.
Yes. Well, Mr. Walsh was saying about the cocksucking. So let's get back. Let's get back. Number fourteen. Final maps? Fuck you and your final maps. The rapist David Rue continues to write-
Okay, you're not on the subject matter. Start us one minute for general public comment.
Hold on a minute, Paul. I was on Mr. City Attorney, Madam City Attorney.
One minute for general public comment.
I did not get the warning before.
So now we get to the good news. I have done it again. I have delivered you from another city, son of a bitch like Mitchell Englander. This time Antonio Villarigosa. I fought and I won. Third fucking place behind an unknown Republican. I did it again. Let that be a lesson to all of you in those chairs. I can make your political career or I can fucking destroy it. Now, what you might not know is why did Gil Sidiot re-win his election? Because I helped him win. Because if I had not helped him win, the bicycle cocksucker would be in his chair. But the bicycle man lied. And finally, Jim Burkhart, that fat fuck working for Paul Coretts, was fired by Antonio Villarigosa before the election. We win again.
Your time is up. All right. Antonio? Minute for item thirteen.
We say hell no. I admonish you that many of these day workers are criminals in their own country. They are culeros y malandros and the dismadrosos. They are treacherous, filthy, conniving pigs and deceitful. Most are drug dealers and thieves and brutes. You are endangering your lives if you hire any of these day workers because a multitude of them run with many underground criminal organizations. You are setting up yourselves for danger. Please don't hire them. Please don't trust them. But deport them, deport them, deport them. And we absolutely love eyes. And this is one of the main reasons that Donald Trump is trying to set up a new president. And that is to protect the Americans from hiring these criminal wetbacks who are asking for jobs. And what they're trying to do is win your trust and your confidence and gain access to your homes and then unlock the doors or the windows without your knowledge and then break into your homes at night. Ransack your homes, ransack your vehicles and destroy your lives, totally uproot your lives. Thank you very much. And having said that, the night before, in the early hours of June the 7th, I went to the LAPD headquarters to file a theft report with Sergeant Female Fuentes and Male Officer Munoz and Female Officer Gutierrez. Because a young Latino homeless gangbanger and who was a drunk, you could smell it on his breath, this was after midnight. I wanted to get rid of him without any physical confrontations because he was verbal and obnoxious. This was while I was setting up my tent on Spring Street, as I am homeless as well. I decided to offer him my sleeping bag. That was just Lysol and wash so he could get some sleep. But he wanted to sleep in my tent. I said, hell no. You get the sleeping bag and hasta la vista, cabron. So well, he looked up and he took the sleeping bag. And along with my sleeping bag, he took my purse. He took my purse. He took my fucking purse. He took my money, my IDs and everything in it. And I was so upset. And that's why I filed a police report.
Thank you very much. The next speaker. I think that concludes. We have one more? Oh, Lauren Luttrell?
Can I comment on number one and then general? Hello?
One and thirteen and fourteen.
And then I don't need thirteen or fourteen.
Just general public comment? Okay, one minute for general public comment.
One in general. My name is Lauren Luttrell and I'm with, or I live in District 12. And I'm getting used to speaking before you. It's really intimidating. I can't imagine how hard it is being in your spot with all that responsibility. One of the things that startled me a little bit was I didn't see notice of the fact that a lien would be put on these people's houses. And I feel that that's a bit unfair, going into it, you know, thinking it's a thousand-dollar fine or whatever. It's much different than having your whole house taken away from you. And they were stale, like 2014 and 2015 violations. So I don't understand why current actions are being taken for stuff that's really, you know, years ago. They should have taken care of it then. Right now, it's almost like a sneak attack to make them. All right. For the general-
Thank you very much. No, that was for the general public comment. That's what you said you wanted, right? So you were speaking specifically on that one item, on the liens. Okay, we'll go ahead and give you a minute for general public comment.
I just want to say a poem. And it's called "Ba Ba." I'm sorry, it's called "Resources." "Ba Ba." Hey there sheep. For me, have you-
So ma'am, it's got to be only items pertaining to-
General?
General has to be items pertaining to this body.
I can't read a poem?
To this elected body, under our purview. Not reading poetry or, we appreciate it, but it's items that are specifically under our purview only.
I didn't know that. Do you have a code?
Sorry?
Is there a code to back better?
Yeah, yeah, it's all written. It's all written in the council rules.
Where? Can I look at it?
It's all posted in the back as well. And it's posted on every agenda, all the rules.
It's posted in the back?
Yeah, you can pull up the council rules.
Where?
The city attorney can, we'll have somebody speak to you on the side.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. We can go ahead and vote on the remaining items, please?
Mr. President.
The sergeant will fill you in.
Item number one A, there is, the Department of Building and Safety requests for item number one A to reduce the lien to $631.06 due to partial payments. Reduce item one B to $623.28 also due to partial payment. C, reduce to $179.06. E, reduce to $955.25. And to continue all four liens to July 3rd, 2018, sir. And the rest of the items, that would be one D, thirteen, fourteen, A and B, the council can vote on, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Excuse me for one second. Sir, at the podium, did you ever? We're good? Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on those items? Open the roll? Close the roll? And tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. And any other items?
No, sir.
Okay, we do have Ryan for general public comment for one minute.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Reso-Farsai. My lifelong address is 2714 Portland Street. I'm a member of Beta Theta Pi. My president was Dr. Stephen Sample. I'm here to step up for Dr. Max Nikias. I want to thank the opportunity to speak this Friday morning. Dr. Max Nikias served as the 11th president of the University of Southern California and he just stepped down. I want to thank him. I'm a Trojan. He did a wonderful job. It's unfortunate our recent board of trustees president, who's a builder, doesn't like the student campus or whatever. Maybe he's going to a different direction. I also want to invite the kid from Akron, after he loses to the Warriors, to come join the Lakers. We need a mentor for our young dookie, the Blue Devil. He's got a seven-foot wingspan and he needs a mentor.
You've got to speak to only items under our purview.
Yes, sir. I am the spirit of Dr. Bus. We need the kid from Akron.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Your time is up. Okay, we'll go ahead and recess and go into the special meeting.
Mr. President, I'll call the roll. That is Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sidiot, Englander, Harastasen, Weezer, Coretts, Krakorian, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Thirteen members present in accord, Mr. President. Items sixteen through nineteen are items for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open those for consideration. Open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, then those items are before us. We have cards on all those items?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and bring up the cards now. Okay, sixteen through nineteen, we're going to take them all at once. Lauren, again, if you want to come on up. You got us, you're good? Okay. Sean?
Yeah, item sixteen, I am four. Item nineteen, I'm four-two.
Okay, thank you very much. Antonia?
Now, ladies and gentlemen, what is still not clear here, and it's ambiguous and it's vague. You hear, you are going to finance the construction of a 50-unit multifamily housing project. And again, who are the people that are housed? Who are the people that are homeless? They are white, African-American and law-abiding military veterans. Now, who are the ones that are subsidized and housed? The fucking wetbacks and the fucking gangbangers. Then the communities go down. And you wonder why we're in shambles and a shithole and a cesspool? God almighty, we're spending so much money, $17,500,000 to finance this shit so we can house these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers who are nothing more than a bunch of goddamn pigs, thieves and a bunch of fucking losers. And all they do is they bring down the communities, they bring down the environment, they bring down the city, and then they create a whole multitude of crimes that nothing ever gets resolved. So what we're doing is we're compounding the problems. Again, we are bringing in more wetbacks and gangbangers, more wetbacks and gangbangers. And we're moving out all the middle-class families out to the streets. The blacks are out in the street, the legal, the beautiful military veterans are out in the street, and the whites are on the street, and the good, law-abiding citizens, Mexicans, are on the street. But who is going to protect those? We're just pushing them further down south of the border. And we're bringing in more goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers. And again, the communities and the cities are going down and down. We've got graffiti, we've got vandalism, and we've got runaway theft, home invasion robberies. God damn, they're all housed and they're still robbing from the homeless on the fucking streets.
Antonia, okay, cut her mic.
God damn, how is that possible, Englander? You talk about the homeless, you know nothing about the homeless, man. Those fucking wetbacks who have a home, come to the streets to rob them, rob me and rob me of my money, my ID and everything else and from the military veterans. You know shit about the homeless. You know shit about the law-abiding citizens. But your Jews want to house all the fucking wetbacks and gangbangers so we can push middle-class America onto the streets. God damn, that's unfair. It's unjust and it's outright criminal. And you should go to prison and fry for that. I just had my fucking purse stolen, my IDs, my money, everything, and I don't have a fucking penny, not even to get on the fucking bus. So you talk to me about homelessness? You know nothing about homelessness. You're hiring all these fucking wetbacks and gangbangers, you're housing them, you're providing everything for them. What about America? Middle-class America? What about them? At least Donald Trump is taking care of them. He's fighting for them. You don't give a shit as long as you get your money. Hara magida, hara magida, hara.
Okay, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
God bless Donald Trump and God bless America.
So-
Mr. President, item nineteen, the amendment for-
Yeah, that was a little extra. Yeah, I agree. Okay, I'm sorry.
Item nineteen, there is an amendment on item nineteen. The amendment has been posted, circulated and is now before council, sir.
Great, thank you very much.
But at this moment-
Mr. Walsh, you're disrupting this meeting again. So it's another warning, so you're asked to leave. Goodbye, Mr. Walsh. Sergeants, please escort him out. You can't stand up and yell in the meetings, you know that. We've already given several warnings during this meetings, so you're out. Mr. Walsh? You're continuing to disrupt this meeting if you don't leave. Eric Previn, come on up. Eric, you're on sixteen and seventeen.
Thanks. It's Eric Previn from the CD2 area and the Third District, Supervisory District. You got your high-road training program. Now, sir, high-road training refers to taking the high road, which, being fair, equitable, reasonable. Now, the low-road training program is working great down here. You've got your ad hoc violations going on all over the place. And I want to give kudos to the temporary acting president for really pressing the low-road approach. It's going very, very well from that perspective. From the perspective of high-road partnership, where we allow the public to speak on, for example, item nine and nine A, where you amended from $348,000 down to $220,000, the little cha-ching for outreach at the neighborhood council level to the clerk, it's a big red flag because we asked the clerk who's charged with curing and correcting and reconsidering these items on the agenda.
Mr. President, the speaker is not on the agenda.
Yeah, once again, not on the agenda. So you know what?
High-road partnership, buddy.
That's your time.
High-road partnership. Sit down. Sit down, sir.
Your time's up. Okay, so next speaker, please. Actually, I believe we can actually go ahead and then vote on this item then?
Mr. President, that would be sixteen through eighteen.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
And item nineteen, as amended, sir?
Yes, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved.
Mr. President, there is a request for urgent forthwith for sixteen, eighteen and nineteen, and that requires another vote, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for the urgent forthwith. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved.
Mr. President, would the council like to go into special meeting number two, sir?
Yes, please.
I will call the roll. Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sidiot, Englander, Harastasen, Weezer, Coretts, Krakorian, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Thirteen members present in accord, Mr. President. Item number twenty is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, we'll open the roll for consideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, next items, please. Oh, actually, we've got to go ahead and take those items now. So we have cards on those items? Yes, okay, so Antonia? And as you're making your way up here, Antonia? On this item? I'm going to tell you, if you yell again into the mic, because our interpreters are complaining, then we're going to cut your time. You can speak, but don't yell.
So in other words, we have to be robotic to please Mitchell Englander? Is that what you're saying? We have to-
You're not on topic and you're going to cut your time if you're not on topic.
We are regulated in speech. Whatever you say or you-
Okay, your time is up. You're not disrupting this meeting. Have a seat. Have a seat. You're disrupting this meeting. Okay. Sergeants, please escort her out for continuing to disrupt this meeting. Thank you. Sergeant, she may need some help out. You're out. Thank you very much. Next speaker? Eric, come on up. She's continuing to disrupt this meeting.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from CD2, and these comments are constitutionally protected, so any interruptions will be treated appropriately.
Okay, you're not speaking on the actual subject matter.
Item twenty is the item before us today, sir. It's a item at 2600 South Hoover Street. And it's a TEFRA. Now, what TEFRA hearings are, sir, as you know, is where the federal government pays attention to the way the local actors are behaving. And when we see violations or when we see problems, we act strongly sometimes. Sometimes we, you know, put in someone like Eileen Decker, who worked for the mayor, and nothing happens. But we're working on those transitions to hold accountable the folks who are having the hearings, holding the hearings and behaving in the ways that you're behaving. You know, in my opinion, you've really crossed the line. We need to look into a 5250, Buscayino. Do you know what a 5250 is for the chair?
Okay, you're not on the subject matter. You've got to look on the subject matter.
Yeah, we'll look it up, sir. 5250 for Englander. Thank you.
Sean?
I'm against this. I am, thanks.
Thank you very much. Lauren? Okay, pass. Is there a Saxonian here to speak? No? Okay. All right, so Wayne, you're continuing to disrupt this meeting. So this is your third warning now? So now we're asking you to leave. So have a nice weekend, Wayne. You know, you're disrupting this meeting. Do not walk up to the podium. You're disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, if you could please escort him out? Please escort him out. Thank you very much. You're gone. You're continuing to disrupt this meeting, Wayne. Sergeants, please escort him out immediately. Okay, so we have, we can go ahead and vote on that item? You're continuing to disrupt this meeting, Wayne. Continuing to disrupt this meeting. Continuing to disrupt this meeting as you're making your way out. All right, so we'll go ahead and take up that item now. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved, so we can convene the specials.
Mr. President, there is a request for item twenty to go urgent forthwith.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for the urgent forthwith request. Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved. Now we can adjourn the special meetings and reconvene the general meeting. We have one more card or two more cards for general public comment. Timothy Owens?
Good morning. My name is Timothy Owens. I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I volunteer. I teach homeless people and veterans how to use computers. Mayor Garcetti wants to end homelessness, but there's one problem. There's no employment skills training available on the internet. Workforce Development Department, Employment Development Department, LA Housing Authority, they all provide wonderful job training centers, but there's no training on the internet that's available. Homeless people and families, they live in their cars, their RVs, shelters, motels and apartments. They have access to the internet, but many times they cannot get to the job training centers. These families need to know how to create a resume, how to go online and how to job search and apply for a job online. My company offers this training, jobtraininginthecloud.com. City Council, I just ask you to please fund this training so that it's free access to all the residents of Los Angeles. We can beat homelessness and I certainly appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thanks for your service to the country. Jacqueline Richardson?
This is not nice. I don't believe you were at fault originally for those liens on people's houses, but I do believe big money, big time big money is in back of this. They're way down the road so that you can't see them. They've got guns on you, guns that you can't see. I say this because these are thefts, but they're thefts done under the color of the law. They're thefts because the people do get proofs of service, but some of these people, I believe, who get these letters can't read or they believe everything's okay. The rent is paid, the house note is paid, insurance is paid, property taxes are paid, and they may toss that away. What is this? What is this junk? They may not know what it is, so they don't look at it clearly. I believe big time, big money is way in the back of that someplace and have, doing this under the cut of the law so they can make big time, big time money. That's my belief of that.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes the general public comment. I believe we have motions for posting and referral. Thank you very much. We have announcements. Looking to my right, seeing none. Looking to my left, seeing none. If everybody can please rise for adjourning motions. Looking to Mr. Rue's side of the horseshoe. We have adjourning motions, colleagues, seeing none. To my left, seeing none. I do have one adjourning motion. Colleagues, I ask that, with great sorrow today, that we adjourn in the memory of a dear friend, a friend of our office, a friend of the community and somebody who's done a lot. Steve Harris, who's a loving husband to his wife, Susan, for 52 years, father of two children, Michael and Bethany, and he loved his family as they loved him in return. Steve is also a community leader. He served as the president of the Friends of Oak Ridge, a participant in numerous civic organizations such as the Mountains Restorations Trust, the Mountain Line Conservancy and the Land Trust Alliance and many others. His actions, participation show a deep and abiding belief in the democratic experiment and the idea that we all have a responsibility to contribute to the health of our communities and the protection of our planet.